I'll call the roll. Bill?
Here.
Um, Mike? Is Mike Knappic here?
I don't see him.
Okay, Chris?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
And I'm here. All right, 5:02. All right. Um, I need, do we, no, this is not executive session, right?
No.
This is not an executive session. Okay. So, um, can I turn it over to you, Michael? All right.
Sure, I, the, for the members of the community that are watching today, we have two presentations before us, one at 5 o'clock and one at 6 o'clock. I think we'd like to, we'd rather take action that keeps Mrs. West in our district for years and years to come. She's chosen to retire. These are shoes that will be impossible to fill, but we're looking at firms that might be able to assist the Board of Education in the district and the community in trying to fill those huge shoes. And at the 5 o'clock hour, we've got the Ohio School Boards Association with us this evening. And Cheryl Ryan is representing OSBA, and Cheryl, it's glad to have, glad to have you here. Welcome to Worcester, virtually.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You ready for me to just take it away?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, I, first of all, I want to thank you for having OSBA with you this evening. Teri Morgan was scheduled to be with you and is, is very sorry. She called me last night and she has a father who is, is not doing, not doing well. And she got a message that made her feel like she needed to dash up to where he lives. And I'm, you know, if you could, I'll keep her in your thoughts. She wanted to be with you tonight, but she asked me to try and fill in, and so I'm happy to be here. I have a fairly straightforward presentation. Be happy to take any questions during or, or after. But the presentation won't take too long, and then I just want to be able to answer your questions. And so if it's okay with you, I will share my screen with you right now. Can you all see this?
We can.
All right. So, um, I'll just take it away and you all, again, stop me or, or don't, and we'll see what happens, okay? So, again, the, this is Teri, my name is Cheryl Ryan, and we, we work as a team at OSBA, and Teri's an integral part of my team, so happy to be here with you this evening. So, I am going to try, and here we go. A public school treasurer. So, we really like it when our public school treasurers are seen by the board and the community as the CFO, the Chief Financial Officer in the district, and certainly the financial expert within the district. Many treasurers are happy taking a behind stage or side stage role. But, but now with the demands in public schools of, of treasurers, oftentimes treasurers are front and center. And what we're seeing now is many boards want to look for a treasurer who is at least comfortable in the role of being a presenter and working with the superintendent in a partnership to make sure that stable financial resources are a part of the community for its long-term future. So that person must be able to instill a great deal of confidence, not only in the board, but in the superintendent, other administrators, and most definitely by the community. So, let's see, why does this not want to let me go to the, here we go?
I've infected it.
OSBA is the Boards Association. So we are the trade association for school boards in Ohio, and Worcester is a long, long, long time member of the Boards of the OSBA. So, Teri, Steve Horton, and I, who are the key search facilitators at OSBA, are all former board members. All of us have been doing this a long time. This is my 14th year doing searches for OSBA, and it's a professional, it's a professional thing for us. It's not a side job. We have two administrative support people that work with us on various aspects of our search. Teri would take the lead for you as your key search facilitator, but Steve and I would be right there with her. We believe that your association and your relationship with OSBA has been long-term, and hopefully will be long-term from here on out. So it is in our best interest that we continue to do a very good job for you, and particularly if you were to retain us for your search, we have a long-term invested interest in doing the very best job possible and seeing that you are able to find somebody that can indeed fill the shoes that your superintendent said were so important for the city of Worcester and your school community. We do understand that you have a need for a really flexible process. So we have a timeline and a model that's a little bit tried and true, but for every district, it's different. Different boards want certain pieces of the search to go faster or slower than other boards do, and there can be internal reasons why those things need to happen. And we would work with you to develop your timeline so that it feels very good for all five of you, and certainly for your superintendent as well. We believe one of the things that we best bring to the table at OSBA is the fit. And I think that there are a lot of hundreds of talented treasurers in Ohio, but they are all not going to be the right treasurer for Worcester. And we also believe that there are certain boards that need certain characteristics in greater doses. We all know that every aspect of our personality is, is different. If you look at your personality and your skill set professionally as a pie, different pieces of your pie are bigger or smaller. And one of the things we try and do at OSBA is find out from you, the board, which pieces of the pie Worcester needs for this person to bring to the table in large chunks. We are there for you every step of the process. We support and guide and advise you, and certainly bring to you the benefit of our knowledge with other treasurer searches and with other districts similar to or different from Worcester. But you make all the key decisions. The Ohio Revised Code is very clear on the fact that the board is responsible for hiring and managing two employees, the superintendent and the treasurer. And so we believe the board has to be front and center and very much involved in the process. What, what OSBA brings to the table? We are members of the National School Board Association and an association called the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. There are not that many state associations that do treasurer searches. There, most state associations are, most states, the superintendent supervises also the treasurer or in some states, the business officer. It's different in Ohio. There are only five or six states like us, but we connect with them to post your search and to advertise it. Again, we are very, very board-centered. We have a full-time professional team of very experienced consultants. And we have a virtual online application system that is paperless, proprietary, and created by OSBA, and we'll talk just a little bit more about that here in a minute. We do give you customized attention because there are three professionals at OSBA that do searches, and we distribute searches across the three of us. None of us is doing more than a couple of searches at a time. And so each of our districts who we work with do get highly customized and very careful attention from the facilitators. We work with you on the interview from building your interview, talking with you about questions that match that profile that was developed in the planning meeting, evaluation support, references, reference lists, the whole, the whole soup to nuts. When you hire OSBA, what we are trying to do is take the search off of the board's plate until such time as you will come together to choose the applicants who you'd like to talk to. We have exclusive use in Ohio of something called the Achiever, which is an online leadership assessment, similar in some ways to Myers-Briggs. A lot of people are more familiar with that. It is included in your search for your finalists. Most searches end up with two, sometimes three finalists. And we ask all finalists in OSBA searches to take the Achiever, and we share those results with the board. And it oftentimes is just another tool in the kit for you to understand whether or not this person, aside of his or her financial or accounting skill, is the right fit for Worcester. We do offer leadership development training, also included in your search, a workshop, and guaranteed satisfaction. In my 14 years, it's happened only twice in my searches that we were not able, at the end of the search, to find someone the board wanted. In one case, the board and this person could not come to contract agreement. And in another case, weirdly, the gentleman's wife decided at the very, very end that she did not want to move to this community. And I, I personally wish they'd had that conversation much earlier in the search, but, but, but it does happen. And if, if it does happen, we will start the search and do it again, and it doesn't cost you anything at all. So I've, I've alluded to a couple of these phases, but the first phase of our process is leadership profile development, and that is a meeting with the five board members, sometimes the superintendent also, in the case of a treasurer. And we find out what it is Worcester wants, what it is Worcester needs, what does your strategic plan look like? What are the needs of your community right now? What is, what is your student demographic like? What are the priorities in the next two to four to six years for a treasurer? How has the previous treasurer managed committees, relationships with the superintendent? What do you want to keep? What would you like to change? Those kinds of things. We do offer aggressive statewide recruitment, lots of phone calls, lots of emails, lots of visits. Used to be personal ones in our office, now they're over Zoom, but personal visits with potential candidates. We offer an objective screening. All three of the search facilitators at OSBA will review all of your applications, compare them to the profile that has been developed with you, and offer their take. But we do offer a board-centered candidate evaluation, meaning your facilitator will come back, have another meeting with you. You will all have seen every one of your applications. At OSBA, it's our strong belief that search facilitators should not narrow the field for the board. So if you have 13 people, apply, I'm not going to say 13. If you have 14 people, apply for your position. You will see all 14 applications. OSBA will give you its opinion on the relative merits, strengths, baggage or non-baggage, anything that we know about these candidates, we will offer. And you will have a conversation with your facilitator in that screening meeting, but whoever you decide to interview, that is your call. That evaluation leads to usually one or two rounds of interviews, almost always two, reference checking, and then appointment. And then sometime, our search again includes a team workshop for you scheduled. Sometime, we prefer in the first six months of your new treasurer's appointment. This is a little bit about the ways that we market the position. I mentioned NAS and state association websites. OASBO is a place that we do some advertising. We've worked with some districts that wanted it posted with the CPA Association. We use our briefcase in our journal, press releases and e-alerts. And then, as I said, lots of personal touch and conversations with administrators who might know of other treasurers, other assistant treasurers. And depending on your profile and, and your preferences, sometimes even a recently retired treasurer that wants to, wants to stay in the ballgame. I mentioned to you Revelus. We developed Revelus several years ago, probably about 10 years ago. It started as kind of a monster.com, and for applicants, on the applicant's side, a proprietary online paperless application, but it has developed into a 360. It's now used by 10 different state associations, excuse me, 13 different state associations now use Revelus for their searches, and we're very happy about that. So it would, it provides a face for your applicants. It provides a face for the board, and it provides a face for OSBA. It allows all of us to see all documents together at the same time and have conversations just like this one about your applicants. Once we open the portal to the board for you to review your applications, it will stay open until you are at the appointment stage so that you can continue to go back and review ahead of interviews. Or it, it also allows us to develop questions that would be customized for Worcester to include in the profile so that anybody that applies for the Worcester position would have certain questions that the board has asked them to complete. And it, it, it gives you access to everything that we used to have to bring a big old cardboard box into your office and, and go through all of these files one by one. But it also allows confidential reviewing for each of the five of you to take notes that are your private notes, and, and then you have them available to you during the screening meeting. I mentioned the Achiever. It does evaluate finalists against benchmarks. When we purchased the Achiever, we found about two dozen treasurers that, that rated highly by the auditors, by OASBO, and by, by their school boards, and asked them to take the Achiever so that we could benchmark for treasurers, and that has been done. And our boards have found the Achiever to be a very valuable tool as they do second round interviews because the Achiever not only assesses candidates, but it basically provides questions to boards based on those assessments. So one of the continuums, for example, is a flexibility to rigidity sort of a continuum. And if somebody were to assess at being quite rigid in their thinking, they are definitely rule followers and they want lots of structure. They expect those that they supervise to, to appreciate that kind of a style. It might offer a question for the board about what happens when, when the apple cart gets tipped and, and how, how would that person handle that kind of a situation? It does provide behavior-based interview questions and advice for future professional development. I mentioned the customized leadership workshop, and it does provide the leadership team an opportunity to start out on the same page and to review communications protocols, particularly if you should hire somebody who's coming from another district and has a very different culture. And it allows that person to understand your board superintendent relationship culture and how you expect your new treasurer to work with your district leadership team. We provide references and a timeline model, again, to be reviewed with you at a planning meeting. The 90 days for a treasurer search is, is based on an average, and that is if you post a position for an average amount of time, if you take an average amount of time to do interviews and that kind of thing. We have done searches in as brief as 30 days and, and even longer than 90. So that is a very customized timeline, but that gives you an idea. These are some of the steps I mentioned. The very first one, if you were to retain OSBA after the contract, would be a planning meeting. Then your search consultant would not see you again until the screening meeting. But between then and the screening meeting would be active recruitment of candidates, setting up your interviews, and you would move forward with interviews, reference checking, achievers, that kind of thing, and then hopefully lead to an appointment at a board meeting in public. In a superintendent's search, we often do focus groups. That is not usually a part of a treasurer's search, although oftentimes a board would like to include an opportunity for central office staff to meet finalists, if that is important to you. Your OSBA consultant would certainly talk with you about that in your planning meetings so that along the way between now and the time that you appoint your new treasurer, if it's important for the board, for any other individuals other than the superintendent to meet candidates, finalists, we certainly can figure out a way for that to happen. Just a few critical points, again, are that decisions belong to the board. We value community input, and we don't believe we should filter information. So if we know something positive or negative about a candidate, or a candidate chooses to apply for the job, that you may tell me, or Teri, in the end, Cheryl, that person just did not have enough experience or skill or whatever it might be. We're not, we're not sure why that person applied for the job. We don't disallow applications. We allow anybody that sees the posting and wants to apply to do so. But your judgment and our judgment about those persons qualifications, that's when it comes into play at our screening meeting. We follow all Ohio ethics laws, Public Records, and Open Meetings Act rules. Very happy to see that, that you had this meeting as an open and public meeting this evening. We believe the process needs to be equitable and transparent for all candidates. And, and that goes with members of the media. I, I love developing positive relationships with media members. And so one of the questions that your facilitator would ask you in a planning meeting is, is for the names of people that might attend your, your board meetings so that we can keep an, an open door about information that your media members and your community members find important during the course of the search. We believe that the search begins with a strong team of consultants working with a strong board and a strong district leadership team, and that the long-term relationship is, is supercritical. So OSBA doesn't leave you at the end of the search. You are our members moving forward, and we want to keep that relationship strong. I did mention the guarantee and, and our feeling about long-term success. So with that, I will just thank you for your time and attention and see whether there are any questions.
Cheryl?
Yes, Dan?
Thank you, thank you very much. Question, what challenges do you see going ahead for getting good treasurers right now?
Um, I'll tell you what, the, the treasure market is what we call tight, right? Um, treasurers are not falling off trees. And it's not like good superintendents are falling off trees either. But I always tell boards, there's a natural pipeline in our school system for superintendents, teacher, assistant principal, principal, central office person. You know, so, so we tend to grow superintendents in our public school districts. We do not do that for treasurers. We have done, we being OSBA, OASBO, even sometimes BASSA, a not great job, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of our universities and letting our university students know what a fabulous career opportunity being a school treasurer is. And we need to do better at that. But, so the short answer to, to your question is, you will not have a pool of 25 qualified candidates. We really hope, and I will say, that a community that brings the size of Worcester, the geographic location of your community in terms of its commutability from lots of people in Ohio, the reputation of your school district, and dare I say, your superintendent, and you have a lot of good things going for you. The stability of your outgoing treasurer, those are all good things. So I would personally be, be surprised if you, we didn't have a quality pool to look at.
Sure.
But we will, we will work hard to, to get that pool.
Good.
Thank you.
Cheryl, you said that it's been a tight market, but what's that looked like over the last three years? I mean, is it, is it a trend or is each year unique?
It's kind of a trend. I did two or three good treasurer searches in the last eight months, and all of them were successful. My, my pools varied between nine and 13 people probably. The searches that I did in more populated, slightly larger districts like Worcester did better. North Olsted did a really good search. Maple Heights did a really good search. The searches where we are working in relatively rural areas and in less populated areas, populated areas of the state where there are literally less school districts, breeding, you know, good treasurers, it's tougher. So it's very possible to do a really good search right now, but, but it's, it's, it's not a walk in the park.
So do you do more treasurers or superintendents? I mean, what, is that your specialty, the treasures or?
Not really. No, not really. It's not, it's not a specialty for any of us. We do treasurers and superintendent searches. And you know, it's so funny, some years it seems like it's all superintendent searches. Some years it's treasurers. I would say that in the last nine or 10 months, we've seen significant treasurer turnover. And so there have been a lot of treasurer searches. And it's interesting, some years, every search I do will seem to be in the northeast region of the state. And then the next year, it's the southwest region of the state. So I, I wouldn't, I would say that in my 14 years, there has not been an average model. But I will tell you that the last 12 months, we've done significant numbers compared to what we normally do of treasurer searches.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, my friends?
Probably just one comment, Cheryl, all we're looking for is a CFO that'll keep us off the ballot for 15, 20 years.
Cake, cake, piece of cake. Piece of cake.
Low bar, low bar.
We did a treasurer search down in New Richmond, Ohio, which I don't know if any of you know where that is, but it's way down on the river east of Cincinnati. And kind of a rural district, but within 20 minutes of downtown Cincinnati. So anyway, they, they had not been on the ballot in 50 years. And, and needed to go on the ballot in the last several years badly, very badly, and failed three or four levies and got a new treasurer this year. Had had a series of interims and successfully found a treasurer. And that one was not easy either. And passed in May. So I think a new treasurer can, a, a great treasurer, old or new, bodes well. But good treasurers will, I'm not saying they'll keep you off the ballot, but they'll stretch it as long as, as they possibly can.
We've lived that.
Cheryl, because Mrs. West has been here as long as she has, and we've been so very, very fortunate to have her fiduciary experience and her leadership, but it's been a long time since the board has done a market analysis for, for a compensation package. How do you advise the board on executive comp?
You know, we, we can certainly send you that data. We have pretty good data updated by ODE. I won't say in a really timely manner always, but we can send you access to a database which is searchable by ADM and by population size, by county. You can even, you could look at all the districts about your size. You can look at all the districts in your county. And we can send you some relatively recent contracts for treasurers in your district so that you can have an idea about compensation and benefits.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I really appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation. It gives me things to think about. None of us obviously have done this before. So we're looking forward to the process, and it would be great to work with you, so.
Well, you are more than welcome. I, again, thank you for your time. Should you choose OSBA to facilitate your search, we'll, we'll do a great job for you. And in any event, we wish you all the best as you move forward.
Really appreciate it. Give our best to Teri.
I will. Thank you for having me.
Yes, yes, and tell Steve we said hi. Yes, yes, and tell Steve we said hi.
I will. Take care.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
All right. So should we, we should adjourn and we'll be coming up?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Really, you really don't need to adjourn because it'll be within the same meeting. But if we weren't in a virtual environment, we would just pivot.
Take a break.
Take a break and shuffle in the next group. But because it's a different Zoom, correct, Nancy?
Yeah, isn't it?
Nancy, you're on.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yes, it's a different Zoom, so we will all have to go out and then come back. Out of this meeting and back into the... End this session, and then we'll move into the next Zoom.
If you could just, you know, like you did the last time, if you could get in, you know, a good five, seven minutes early so we can get things set up and Keaton can get ready to stream it back out to the community again. Thank you.
That sounds good. See you.
Excellent.